Good evening, everyone. We will now begin the recording of our regular monthly meeting. The Reform being for the meetings called order at 6:30 as we went into executive session. The Board then adopted a resolution to appoint Linda Morgan as a Board Member due to the recent resignation of Scott Thurber. We then immediately convene the executive session to discuss the employment history and discipline of particular persons. At this time, we're going to go into our regular session. So we had the motion to reconvene, so we're going to end the executive session. We've already had that.
Who is the second?
Mr. Peters.
Okay. We'll have a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Ms. Berry?
Yeah.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell? Mrs. Spears tonight? Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Urbanero?
Here.
And we welcome Mrs. Morgan back. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Thurber is now his honor. He is a judge, a judge in the town of Peru. And being an elected judge, he cannot afford an education seat. So with that, he resigned, and we know that Mrs. Morgan has valued experience as a Board Member of ten years, and she's agreed to come back with us for the next few months. So we welcome her back. So now I have approval of the agenda with the addenda. A motion?
To move.
Mr. Urbanero, second?
Second.
Mr. Hamilton? Any discussion? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have approval of the minutes of the December thirteenth regular board meeting. Motion? Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Mr. Hamilton? Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And then we have recognition tonight. We recognize Mr. Thurber. He couldn't be with us tonight, but he, of course, four and a half years in Board of Education service. He's volunteered many hours of his time as part of the support of students, employees, and community members. He's been a valued member of our team, and we admire his dedication to the district and now his dedication to the community. So thank you, Mr. Thurber. We approve something that we will be sending to him. Thank you. And I've already done a little welcome to Mrs. Morgan. So there we are with Mrs. Morgan again with us. What's nice about Mrs. Morgan is we don't have to do any training. Just look right in.
We're on back for budgets.
And public comments? Do we have anybody signing up?
I have nothing on the clipboard.
Okay. I did have one on Peru comments. We still have an open Peru comments email that we welcome people to send us any comments if they can't make the board meeting, that we'll read them. So I'm going to read this one from Mr. Jeffrey Barker to the Peru School Board of Education. I submit the following statement for the January tenth twenty-three board meeting to be read and to record during the public comment period. The Peru Central School and perhaps others appear to have a biased budget approval process. This is supported as a fact when reviewing the two thousand twenty-two Peru Central School District Budget Notice. Same was in my mailbox on May twelve, twenty twenty-two. The notice states that voting is to be in person on May seventeen, only between noon and nine, or by requesting absentee ballot because of a qualifying condition. Nowhere on the notice is found a phone number to inquire about what is determined to be a qualifying condition or how to request an absentee ballot that had to be obtained, filled out correctly, and must be received by not later than five p.m. on May seventeen. With high taxes, inflation, fuel, and time conservation, and many with physical limitations, the subcertainly narrow window to get a ballot submitted is just not possible for many of us. Residents with income challenges may not want to have to pay the ever-increasing school budgets as well as the increasing other taxes we must all pay. The Peru school budget increases at about three percent annually and never stabilizes or decreases. Taken over ten years, this would be thirty percent or more if compounded. On May thirteen, twenty twenty-two, I called the Peru District Office and left a message for the business administration to request a ballot and complain about the apparent biased procedure. A response was never received. With interest in voter suppression, this example should be addressed by this board to get a fair opportunity for the class of voters who cannot appear in person to exercise their right to vote by absentee process. Thank you for your consideration to the statement effect. So I do want to clarify, when we have comments that don't usually do address things, but I do want to clarify Mr. Barker's questions regarding the absentee ballot. The district does notice this on the website, Facebook, two publications. The second one really is close to the voting time, and that really gives the tax or predicted tax rates. And the first one explains the budget in a four-page document. The Sun and the Press also post information that we forward to them. And the Clinton County Board of Elections sends us a list of those people who are permanently disabled, and they receive an absentee ballot. So we do have all of those little pieces in place, and we hope that we'll maybe hold a phone number on our next community reports when they come out in May and in April in May. But absentee ballots can be done for seven reasons. Absent from the county of any residence, unable to appear at the polling place because of an illness or physical disabilities, or duties related to the primary care of one or more individuals with physical disabilities, or am a patient in a hospital, I'm an inmate or a patient of a Veterans Administration hospital, absent from my voting residence because I'm detained in jail awaiting action by a grand jury or awaiting trial or confined in jail or prison after conviction for an offense other than felony, unable to vote in person due to risk of transmission of the COVID, and because of my duties, occupation, business, or studies, I'll be required to be outside the county or city of residence on such day, or maybe on vacation outside the county or city of residence. So there are seven situations that can happen. It's an easy check. We have it on our website at the time of budget, and it's an easy check in sending it in, and the ballots are sent out. Anything else to add? Our district clerk was kind of our...
I think other than there are at least three of us that did do a search. We could not find, I don't know if our system didn't record it. Unfortunately, we could find Mr. Parker's voicemail or message. We did do an intense search. We even checked voicemail to see if it ended up as some part of the voicemail folder or something, so I'm not quite sure.
So we'll follow up with him to make sure that he knows that he's requesting an absentee ballot. It will be there.
And as you know, we can't get them out too early because we don't have a budget until the middle of April or July.
So when the bus is off by us, that's when they can go out. They want to have a time. That would separate a lot of people. But we wanted to give everybody the opportunity to vote on our budget. So, and that's why we also have a budget community meeting, so that people who come in can give us their vote.
I'll reach out this week.
Thank you. Your report.
So it's good news that we were back into, it's kind of late right because we're in January, but the good news was we were able to have all of our holiday concerts again. So I think that was a very exciting time. Everyone was, it was really nice to see how our families were excited to come into the school and sing along with our elementary students and also participate in the high school and middle school events. So it was definitely a big hit this year and well-received. Every event that was happening, from the elementary to the high school and middle school, was a full house each time. So the auditorium was back each time. So I just wanted to make, you know, recognize that. I think it makes you feel really good past the COVID. And then the other piece today, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Davy from Shamplain Valley Educational Services and Mr. Michelle Friedman from C V Tech here to do a presentation for us tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
And they have provided two handouts for our members.
Yep.
Good evening, President Barry, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Storms, members of your administrative team, staff, and students, and parents. Thank you all for the opportunity to present this evening. This evening, Mrs. Michelle Friedman, our Director of Career and Technical Education, and I will be sharing a C V E S BOCES update, and the focus and spotlight is on our career and technical education program. Mrs. Friedman is also going to introduce several of your students. So we're thrilled for that opportunity. So I'm going to be very brief and just share a couple of quick highlights and say you have two folders, one of which is actually a focus on career and technical education, but the other folder is actually a C V E S folder. And this is more of a general overview folder for you. And as you open the folder up, you'll notice that we have all of our fact sheets. These fact sheets are actually handouts, and they're also on our website. So all the information here does have interactive links. And if you go to the C V E S website, you'll actually be able to pull that information up. It includes information not only about C V S as a whole, my role as a district superintendent, and information about all of our programs, really a highlight sheet. You also have in your folder a brief summary sheet. And as you know, and as you, for those of the Board members who have been on the Board and have had these presentations before, Shamplain Valley Educational Service is very fortunate to work with the Peru Central School District as one of our component districts. I want to recognize your Superintendent, Mr. Storms, for his leadership of Peru and also being an active and visible leader with our chief school officers. He does a great job. He, Mr. Storms, you've been a great addition. You've been an active and really contributing member. Your insights are really valuable, and you represent your district with distinction in every meeting and every opportunity. So I want to acknowledge his leadership and thank you for supporting his participation in the many activities as well as your staff. And C V S does support many of the activities and trainings throughout the region, and we're very pleased to contribute and support that as well. One of the items I'd also like to acknowledge as well is that your BOCES aid ratio, and there's an error on our sheet here, so I will double check with that, but your BOCES aid ratio, and I know Mr. Sap, I think there's an error on this where it said seventy-six percent. I think you're a little bit less than that.
Oh, is that maybe twenty-nine? Just checking.
I believe you're in the mid-sixties, Mr.... If you can just confirm that for me? Do you know at the top? So the way that the BOCES aid ratios work is it's a reimbursement rate on the investment that your district makes for BOCES services. So generally, I believe you're in the high sixties as well, but I believe that sixty-seven, seventy-six percent might be a little higher. But with that said, if you spend a dollar, you get back, if it's seventy percent, you get back seventy cents of the dollar. So with that being said, the services and information that you participate in include administrative services, career and technical education, special education, as well as school services and contractual services. You are an active and vibrant member of our various services, and we will share the additional, the confirmation of this sheet with you in the morning as well. But I want to acknowledge your participation as an active component district and taking advantage of many of the services. And tonight, we're thrilled to really focus and spotlight on our career and technical education program. Mrs. Friedman is our dynamic Director of Career and Technical Education. She's an administrator and an educator who has spent her career here in the North Country. She's also risen through the ranks and really is recognized not only locally but also statewide as an outstanding leader and representative of career and technical education. She's a leader in an organization statewide called ACTIA. She works at the state level. She represents our students and your students with distinction at every opportunity. And it's my pleasure to ask her to come up, and Mrs. Friedman, so come on up, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you so that you can share the information about our career technical program and also introduce some of your...
Thank you, Dr. Davy. I love you. Thanks. Thank you so much, everyone, for the opportunity and privilege of your time, President Barry, members of the Board, Superintendent Storms, our distinguished members of the faculty and administration. This is really a pleasure for me to speak to you on behalf of the Division of Career and Technical Education for Clinton Essex Warren Washington BOCES. All of us have our history here in the North Country. If you've done your entire schooling in New York State, then you're familiar with the state education system and perhaps the BOCES system. So depending on which generation we're in, we have gone through several different iterations to lead us to where we are now in the fields of career and technical education. Several decades ago, there was an opportunity for students to participate in BOCES programs called VOTEC programs. Those programs were skill-oriented and typically for students who were not going to pursue additional college or post-secondary education. As the years progressed, the State Education Department continued to add and expand the Commissioner's Regulations under Part one hundred to phase out VOTEC and to embrace occupational education, which in that iteration, in that era, started to involve more of the soft skills training and more service-level opportunities again for students who had not identified themselves as looking for a career path that may require additional post-secondary training. So there was always a tiered track. In the last twenty years, we've seen quite a shift in the mindset, not only in the State Education Department, but across the country in the movement and the evolution to career and technical education, which is no longer an either-or approach to what students are exposed to when they are participating in high school, on board, and on target for graduation and what's next. So hopefully y'all have tickets in your pocket for the gazillion-billion-dollar mega millions. But I don't think I'm going to shock anybody by saying that unless you win that, we all are going to work. So for every student that comes in at kindergarten or even in pre-K, throughout our experiences with us in district, when they cross the stage in June of their senior year, there is a what's next. College and post-secondary training is certainly an amazing opportunity and pathway to what's next. But even after the end of your PhD, you still go to work. So we want to make sure that in our opportunities with our boards, that we are explaining the shift from VOTEC to CTE and the world that we're in now, the fact that thirty percent of your eligible juniors and seniors from Peru Central School are participating in a CTE program of study at this time. Some of the shifts that we have seen over the years from a VOTEC program where it maybe was a course or an opportunity to learn how to use some tools or be exposed to a shadowing experience has evolved into a highly regulated program of study under the Part one hundred Commissioner's regs, wherein that tech centers like what we have, and we have three in our BOCES that C V Tech oversees, two tech centers in Clinton County, one tech center in Essex County, all providing opportunities for students to participate in two-year, New York State-approved programs of study under the Commissioner's Regulations. In the handouts and the packets that I provided with you, there's a lot of information in there. There's information about the shift from VOTEC to ACHA to CTE. Some of the myths of what CTE is and what CTE isn't. There's this myth that CTE is for boys. We're going to shatter that myth in a couple minutes when you hear from one of your own students, Alicia, today. But what I'd like to share with you in the overview book that's on the right-hand side of your packet, there is a grid on pages eight and nine which outlines to you how the C V Tech programs are aligned and approved, audited and approved by the State Education Department to have a designation as an approved CTE program, two-year program of study. In order to have that designation, the content must be based in industry, national, or state standards. It must be aligned to the commencement level of New York State Next Gen standards. It must have at least one signed, sealed, delivered, post-secondary articulation agreement to provide a seamless pathway into post-secondary training and allow students to have their training at a discounted cost. There must be an opportunity for dual credit. In this county, it would be cap credit. In Essex County, it would be bridge credit. There must be, under the guidance of a New York State-certified work-based learning coordinator, the opportunities for shadowing internships and work-based learning experiences up to and including our school-based enterprises in which we run and operate salons. We operate greenhouse operations, full-sugar house operations, et cetera. And it must have the opportunity for students to earn their New York State Regents' course requirements through the collaboration with certified core academic teachers while they are training with us. The other component is there must be an opportunity for them to earn credentials and/or New York State or national licensures during their tenure as a high school student. So as you look across that grid, you can see the different components that are outlined for each of the twenty-three approved programs. Those programs must be internally reviewed by an internal review team. An external review team, it needs to be substantiated by the C V E S Board and then sent to the State Education Department for audit and review. Once those programs are approved, they're approved for a five-year period in which they must re-approve every five years. So it is quite a rigorous process. We're very proud of the process. But I want to give you the idea and the sense of there is no CTE student profile. There is no one type of student who can participate in a CTE program. Now, the range of programs go beyond the grid that you see. Those are our CTE two-year programs of study. We also have one-year accelerated programs, which are new visions programs. They are competitively based. Students must apply to get in this year in our medical careers program, which is located at C V P H, and our Southern program, which is located at Elizabethtown Community Hospital. We had eighty-six applicants, very, very high, very high-functioning, very, very amazing profile of students, and we were able to seat thirty-six. So we have very competitive one-year programs, and we also have a Gen Ed that is not a program of study but a service-level pre-CTE, which allows students to enter into the CTE world in a service-level component in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. Some students stay with us for the whole four years in the service level. Some start in ninth grade, come back to district, get themselves back in order, and then come back to the sister programs. So we have food service, which is service level, auto service, which is service level, with their sister programs of culinary arts management and automotive tech and different transportation clusters. So the purpose of tonight was really to just showcase the opportunities that you all have provided. Eighty-nine of your students currently who are participating in our programs, eighty-seven of them in CTE programs of study, two of them in our pre-CTE programs, which constitutes thirty percent of your available eleventh and twelfth grade population. We are currently providing CTE experiences to eight hundred students in Clinton and Essex County right now at about thirty-eight percent of the available eleventh and twelfth graders. We're seeing a surge in the interest and the shift in mindset about availability of programs of study. Parents have a different mindset. If you look at some of our programs, at the end of their two years with us, they can actually transfer into some of the post-secondary programs with twenty-seven credits. And that is a real cost-effective option for our parents, especially when you're looking at the rising cost of post-secondary education and the amount of debt that folks are carrying. One additional note about the programs of study that are sanctioned by the State Education Department. Students who achieve at a certain level on their three-part required performance assessment, if they achieve at the level set by the State Education Department, they are eligible to earn an advanced Regents' designation, which is called the CTE endorsement, which is a seal that goes on their Peru diploma as an acknowledgement of advanced Regents' designation, similar to the advanced Regents' designations in the core areas and in foreign language. So there is quite a depth and breadth of opportunity. Tonight, we are here to say, if you haven't been at a tech center ever or since one of those past evolutions, please come as a board, come and see your eighty-nine students in these programs, working in simulated work environments, working on equipment. They had me driving a, what was I driving? A Skitter? A Skinner. Like, it's as big as this room. And it's very humbling when you see the excitement, the joy, and the focus when we align rigorous programs with opportunities that they really are relating to and want to pursue. So we invite you to do that as a board. We've had several boards come. Or separately, if you'd like, we can arrange that. On a separate note, before I turn it over to your students, the C V Tech Division, the CTE Division of Clinton Essex Warren Washington BOCES does include the CTE programming that we're highlighting tonight. However, it is inclusive of our Clinton and Essex County communities, wherein adult students can co-enroll into our daytime programs. We do extensive business and industry training for our local business partners. For instance, when Alström, Bombardier gets a new contract, we send either our industry experts to train for their contracts, or they come and they use our facilities and we train there. We also have the opportunity to provide incarcerated programs for incarcerated adults who have not attained their high school diploma and other literacy and job skills training for community members. So it's really important to know the resources that you have through C V Tech for your community at large. And we continue to share that with you and invite you, if you do need or like more information, we're more than happy to provide that. That is in your packets as well. So that's my spiel. And those of you who know me, and President Barry knows me very well, I can go on and on about this forever. I love this. This just sets me on...
Are we allowed to begin?
This sets me on fire. But the real proof is in the students and their experience and the fact that they go from a welcoming environment when they first walk in our doors to a belonging environment as they leave. And it's an opportunity for students to reinvent themselves. It's an opportunity for students to shine in a way that perhaps they hadn't had that opportunity before. We are grateful to be a partner in that with you. We have three students, we have three students that wanted to share their C V Tech experience with you tonight. Unfortunately, Brooklyn Daniels could not be here at the last minute. She sends her regrets. I will tell you, she is in our Allied Health Program on that grid. You'll see that, and she is the epitome of the way this program runs. Her junior year, she did everything she needed to do to train and learn, to sit for her boards for... for her C N A. She passed her boards for as a C N A going into the summer of her senior year in which she practices and she actually works in the nursing homes. She just completed her E K G Tech certification and is currently working on phlebotomy. So when she graduates and you hand her that diploma, she will be a New York State certified practicing C N A, E K G Tech, and phlebotomist. So just so excited, I wanted her to tell you herself, but I couldn't not share that with you. We also have Alicia Martino here with with you tonight. She is a student, she's a senior in our Environmental Conservation and Forestry Program. She's starting to share some things with you. And then y'all saw Ms. Bianca on the screen and said, is she gonna sing tonight? She's not gonna sing, but she's gonna sing the praises of the program that she's in. She could not be here. We told her it was okay, so then she wrote me what she wanted me to say on her behalf, and then she contacted her teacher literally like one o'clock and said, hey, I wanna make a video, can you show it to the board? So we're going to pass it off to Bianca, and then we'll pass it off to, is that the order you wanted to go? Okay. Pass it off to Bianca.
Good evening. I attend C V E S for cosmetology, and I'm a second-year student. When I found out that I was selected to represent Peru's C V Tech students, I was super excited. C V Tech has taught me so much, not only about my program, but about the workforce as well. Going into C V Tech fall of twenty-twenty-one, I thought that I was going to go in and just learn how to braid or how to do makeup, but I learned so much more than I could have imagined. I learned the science behind why hair turns gray. I learned the layers of the skin. I even learned about electricity. I learned about things that I didn't even realize had anything to do with cosmetology. Not only that, but once a week, another teacher comes in and guides students to create their own professional portfolio. C V Tech exposes us to many opportunities, such as sexual assault training courses and OSHA certifications. It opens doors and creates many opportunities and is an environment that runs like a school and a job. Every week, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, I have a real client sit in my chair. I'm able to apply everything that I practice on a mannequin on a real person. Not only does it feel rewarding, but it teaches me the things I like and I'm good at and the things I need to improve on. In my future, I plan on going to a college, and in college, I'll be able to apply all the skills that I've used at C V Tech, and I'll be able to get a job right out of high school at a salon and earn my ends pay for college, all through college, and have very little debt, and for that, I'm so thankful for C V Tech.
I did not prepare. That's fair. This is a note about the cosmetology program. In order to be a cosmetologist, whenever you've gone to the salon, any of us, in New York State, you have to have a license to practice, and in order to sit for your boards, you must have a thousand hours in an accredited program, both practical and written. So attendance is really important, their hours are tracked, and she is on on board to sit for her license in May and hopefully continue to practice while she's going to college. So it's wonderful, and I'm so grateful for her to do this for us. And now I'd like to invite Alicia Martino.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alicia Martino. I'm in the forestry program with Ms. Friedman. Um, C V Tech has really helped me. I kind of always felt like I never really belonged. Like, I knew what I wanted to do, but I didn't know necessarily how to go about it until I found out about C V Tech. When I joined, I didn't plan on going into the program that I went into, because I honestly just didn't have enough information. I knew about five classes, maybe, and that was it. When I joined my program, everything clicked, and I figured out what I wanted to do. Um, I am doing an internship this spring, figured out what I like to do. Ms. Friedman said we have a greenhouse. Me and my teacher and my classmates are running that greenhouse, and I figured out that I'm amazing with plants. I love working with plants. I love the greenhouse. My internship this year, I will be working for a landscaping company, and I don't think I would have made it this far s- this fast without C V Tech. They really helped me. They've opened a lot of doors for me, and they helped me see what I wanted to be and who I would be, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Stay here with me. Stay here with me. So she is very humble, right?
Yes, sir.
So in environmental conservation and forestry, the partnership we have at C V Tech is with the Minor Institute. So every day, they get on a bus and come to C V Tech, and then they get on another bus, and they go up to Minor, up in West Shaysi. They have full-scale logging oper- uh, full-scale logging operations, tree felling, all of the game of logging, which is the international standard for chainsaw operation, correct? Game of logging and 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 tree felling. I'm asking her. So they'll they'll get their certifications there. We run about eleven-hundred taps, so they do their full maple sugaring operations. We have a a full-sugar house on site, so when the tap starts to run, we'll start to make the syrup, bottle it, sell it, and then the greenhouse operations is seed to sale. So they'll do their business plan, they'll do all of their cost estimates, then they'll actually buy them, they'll grow them, they'll sell them, and we'll start all over again. So a lot of opportunities, especially up in the North Country. Our students like to be outside, and they're able to test drive all that big fun equipment and and whatnot. So she is selling herself short as far, and you gotta see her operate a chainsaw. Questions, comments, anything?
No.
Questions for for Ms. Alicia? No? So hopefully you'll take us up on our on our invitation. We'd love to host you, especially when culinary arts is cooking. We have two executive chefs that teach the program, so it's really quite remarkable.
Yeah, and and I'd like to just finish off and confirm, your cos rate ratio this year is seventy-six percent. Next year, it is seventy-six percent, and next year it's seventy-four point nine percent. I did verify that. So approximate tuition is approximately twelve thousand eight hundred dollars for your for your student, for at least Ms. Alicia, and your students to participate. With that, in next year's state aid, you'll get back almost, almost ten thousand dollars on that investment. With the cos rate reimbursement. And I know, you know, Mr. Saab, that money does come back. It's not targeted for C V for saying C V Tech. It comes back as part of your general state aid. But it is a way to really support your investment and also continue that investment of your students. And so with that acknowledgement, you have amazing students. It's our pleasure to to support your district, to support your students, but also to invite you and reinforce that invitation, please come and visit. You'll be amazed, and and it'll change your whole perspective about C T E and and really workforce development and how it's so tied in with preparing your students for the future. So it's exciting.
It's an amazing program. Been there.
You've been there with us, right?
But if anybody wants to go down and say we sit where the medical entrance, because it is just amazing to watch and to visit the different places and what happens on that time, how enthusiastic the students are about getting those works of hands on. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It really is a job, so thank you.
And they get one final plug, and I see on your agenda, you do have the C E W W School Board's meeting, which is Thursday, February second. Dr. Rick Timms is going to be the speaker on School Board finances. Very important as you prepare and commit to to school to budget season. I will share with you, it's going to be a fire and rimstone presentation. He's gonna cut to the fact that he's going to really open your eyes about understanding the budget, how the the money comes to the state, and how it also applies to your school, your your own budget going forward. He's also going to give you a fact sheet, a summary about questions that you could ask for the next day for the legislative breakfast, if you should be if you're going to want to that. So so I do encourage your full board, Mr. Mr. Storms, to attend that and and be part of that, and you're you are also a member of that that School Board Professional Development coser as a way to invest and support in your own participation in your your leadership development. So it's one of those services, but thank you for being a strong supporter, and we look forward to continuing to support your students and and work with them all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. This is your. Thank you. Thank you, Son.
You're a crucial.
Yeah.
I don't know. You can stay until the finish to make fun. Just saying.
Thank you so much for that opportunity.
Okay. Peru Association of Teachers.
So, good evening. I'll be quick, because I know we've got some presentations to go. First, first of all, we'd like to welcome Mrs. Morgan. Back to the board, I thought you were done, but dragging it back in. And we also, I I'm pretty sure that Trish did this last month, and we're just, as the time that Mr. Stafford staffed board in the Calvin hours, he put in for the Bureau of Education for Central School District. So, um, wish everybody a Happy New Year. Hopefully, twenty-twenty-three will continue to improve from twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-two is is getting better. Hopefully, twenty-twenty-three continues. As far as what's been going on, we've been doing some, had some real good discussions with Mr. Storms, you know, at the end of the semester before the break, and things, I think, are in a positive, in a positive place right now, where communication is good. You know, we don't have to get any issues that might come up really quick, so they don't become a large, and I put a lot of that, not only the administrators, you know, they're really, really good to talk to, but also Mr. Storms pretty much has an open door policy for whom we need to meet, so I think things are moving in the right direction, and we look forward to continuing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sports review, right?
Uh, can I do it up the?
Yeah. Okay, of course. Spacebar.
Hi, let's talk about some perimeter.
I know we're in January and we're talking August to November, but it's kind of nice to go a little later, because then all of the athletes were given by this point, so it's it's kind of nice to go with this. So I'll just briefly touch on each sport like we do typically, just to kind of give an overview of how things went, try to incorporate some cool pictures of our athletes participating in the sports they enjoy. Our boys soccer team did very well this season. They lost a heartbreaker in their sectional final to penalty kicks, and went talking to Coach Armstrong. He said if anything in the world could have happened during those penalty kicks, it did. There was a high-speed car chase, there was horns, it was like anything could have happened to happen. But like I said, they lost the heartbreaker, but they had a fantastic season. Our All-Stars were Dominic Favel and Nolan Manchester, and our second team was Nick Pietro, so again, they did very well. Our girls soccer team, so our girls soccer team fought their entire season after graduating ten seniors their previous season. They found themselves in a situation with a very young team. With that youth came some very valuable experience. I'm not sure if all our friends felt that way, but our coaches and players after the season felt that there was some very valuable experience that's going to take them very far in the future. So we're looking forward to seeing how our ladies proceed in the future with all of that experience they have. Our second team, we had two of our ladies, Jaclyn Mitchell and Mackenzie Arnold, who earned All-Star honors. All right, our varsity swim program, again, this fall, we merged with Osable Valley, so this is our second year doing that. And again, we they broke many records and team records were broken. We sent three swimmers to states this year, Ashley Russo, Ella Guero, and Alexis Hathaway. These three athletes also broke several records during their season, and Ella also won the NISBA Sportmanship Award for the section, so congratulations to her. And we wanted to congratulate the entire Osable Swim Team on their C V A C and Section Seven title, and obviously, all of our athletes have participated with them. Our girls cross-country team, they did fantastic this year. They had a huge success. This year, they ended up finishing second in C V A Cs, which is huge strides. Our All-Stars were Mattie Welk, Ophelia Breen, and Brenna LaHart, and then our state qualifiers were Ophelia and Mattie. Mattie also qualified during these meets for the national event, and she went and participated in that and did very well. She is one of our very young athletes. She's a seventh grader and ran very, very competitively all season and was a very high representative at that national meet, so it was a very good honor for her to achieve. Our boys cross-country team, they did another great year. Our boys, we have some very fast runners on our in our school. These boys really put their feet to the ground and get moving. They were very close to another C V A C title this year, but fell short. They were second in C V A C as well. Our first teams were Ryan Squire, Zach Morgan, and Landa Panoff, and our honorable mentions were Elijah Lederman, Connor Graves, and Brennan Peters. Our state qualifiers were Ryan and Zach as well, who did a fantastic job representing us down at the state meet. Our gymnasts are on their continuous roll of Section Seven and C V A C titles. They're on their eighth straight. They, we hosted sectionals this year, and again, they did a wonderful job and took home the title again. We're sending seven athletes to participate in the state meet, and they're all first All-Stars, also one you qualify for state. That's Kennedy Byer, Mattie Wickowitz, Lauren Prescott, Michaela Taylor, Kendra Lawless, Aubrey Niduchi, and Ella LeBarge. So we congratulate them again for another title. Our volleyball team, they had a very successful season as well. They had a record of seventeen and one, and they never dropped a set, which is a section record, through the out the entire season. Our first set loss came in the regional semifinals. That was the very first time that we had dropped a set in a match, so that was a huge feat for them. To be honest with you, it was kind of funny when they dropped their first set in the regional semifinals, it was almost like relief, honestly, and they were just like, oh, finally it's over, and then we could move forward. So they ended up earning C V A C championship, Section Seven champion, and they were a regional semifinalist. Our All-Stars, our most valuable player for Section Seven, we had the honor of Rich Mador. The Defensive Player of the Year was Alyssa Barkalium, and our first team honors were Katie Finn and Mattie Robinson. Rich Mador was also selected for fifth team All-State, so that's a great honor for her to achieve as well. Our football cheer, so this is our second year with our new coach, and this year, we had several new members. They had a great season. Again, our football cheer, it's not an interscholastic, they're not competing during the season. They're competing right now in their season, so this is a non-competitive season for them, so they did a fantastic job supporting our football team that did great, and they did a great job this year at the pep rally. That was one of the best performances those ladies have done in quite a while, so we're very proud of them and their performance. So they're looking forward to comp season as we move forward. And our football team, our football team had a ten-and-one record, C V A C champs, Section Seven champs, and regional finals. If anybody remembers, we got a wonderful snowstorm before regional finals. We had a really difficult time finding a field. Osable Valley stepped up and worked countless hours to clear the field, so we had a place to play, because at that point where we were scheduled to play, the snow was not being removed, and we needed it removed, and Osable stepped up and helped us out tremendously, absolutely tremendously, and we can't thank them enough for that opportunity for us. Our All-Stars, we had quite a few. So Zach was, Zach O'Connell was the M V P of the league. We had a Defensive Player of the Year, Zachary Hunter, and our first team All-Stars were Jack Hanson, Landon Dupree, Rocky Heber, and Eddie Supley. Our second team was Jack Hayes, Zach Instrom, and Riley Heber. We had an honorable mention of Keith Parent and Eddie Supley. And the All-State team just came out about eight days ago, so again, this was a good thing for us to wait a little bit. Our All-State, Zach O'Connell made second team All-State, which is fantastic, and we had Jack Hanson, Zach Hunter, Landon Dupree, and Rocky Heber as honorable mentions of All-State. So that is a wonderful accomplishment for them. Those are some very high honors in that level of play. And we had two C V A C Coaches of the Year this year, this season, so we had Paul LeBlanc for our girls cross-country, here earning that honor, and Ryan O'Connell for football, so we wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate them for earning Coach of the Year, which neither one of them were happy with my serious photos. But probably the biggest accomplishment and the one that we're most proud of is which we've already talked about. It's been as soon as we knew, we it was spread the word as fast as we could. Every one of our competing sports team this season earned a Scholar-Athlete accomplishment, and we're very, super proud of this. Obviously, we have to have a GPA of ninety above, and we had every competing team do that, so that that's an amazing feat for us when we're looking at our education in sports as an extracurricular, that we were able to combine both and get them get them up there. And I'd have to say our football team was the most excited, to be honest. Football team was pretty excited that they finally made it, so congratulations to them and those athletes and their hard work on and off the field.
Thank you.
That was it? You're welcome. That was it, you're welcome.
Great season, thank you.
It's hard to follow the excitement of sports with tables of numbers, right? So I'm going to offer a few things I've incorporated in my presentation is some fireworks, a puppy, and a little bit of romance towards the end. So, we'll start out with fireworks. So I welcome you all, and I wish you all a Happy New Year. One of the things, when I was putting this presentation together, there were a set of slides that were left over from actually last year, as I flash back to the year before. And initially, I thought I'd remove them, but then I reflected on it, and I thought, you know what? I think there's value in going back to see where we've been and what we've been through. So here also is the puppy, right? The Saab family historically had labs, so this was our first shepherd, and Koah came to us on or about January 12th, so that's a picture of Koah. So we were off and running, and these are all slides from, you know, this very presentation back in 21. And this was the kind of climate we had back then. Some of these things are still obviously lingering. And we were just starting with back sensations. Boy, did this turn out to be true. And of course, funding and politics. Climate we had, had back then. In addition, there was a threat of 20% reduction in state aid that we struggled with, didn't know what to do, never thought we'd see that in the middle of the year. Now, we're back to the current, my puppy's grown up. That used to be my chair. Now only on occasion do I get to share it with her. So our present financial climate, we've certainly had influx of federal aid, but it's been in combination with inflationary pressures. Some would say one is related to the other. We're fortunate to have a significant increase in our foundation aid. The building aid we spoke about last year is now flowing into our school district, and the project that we had underway has been completed. The Governor and your State, of the State address today was very positive in terms of state aid. So our outlook is fairly generous for our next year. Don't see any numbers quite yet, but it certainly looks to be equal to or exceeding last year's or this year's projections. And of course, we know about the influx of federal aid into our district. We're still the lingers of COVID, and we've got certainly the influx of flu into our district. But we've reduced significantly a lot of the restrictions and protocols. Now we're facing high rates of absenteeism, and this is challenging both our staff and our students. And it's really causing some instructional and operational challenges, and these are directly related to absenteeism. And we're still struggling with COVID fatigue. With regards to our revenues, and this is the table of numbers, right? I had to get to the numbers at some point. Let's take a look at our revenue projections. Let's start with state aid. And the board, if you take your large paper, and along the top are the revenues. Yeah, I'm going to use those numbers at the top. But by and large, we had a good state aid package last year. Our state aid went up significantly, and our projection for, our assumptions for the coming year are based on a 3% increase in foundation aid and an increase of $400,000 in our categorical aids. Now, if you recall, one of the categorical aids, we had some special ed expenditures, and we anticipate that flowing yet. With regards to the tax levy and pilots, we also had an increase, and of course, this is limited to the calculation that we do on a annual basis. And our projection or assumption for next year is a flat 2%. All the others, you can see the projections we have here. These are conservative estimates carrying them forward. As far as the assumptions, it's just flat. These make up a very small percentage of our overall budget. By far, our largest categories of revenues are a combination of the tax levy and state aid. With regards to our expenditures, you can see our compensation line. Pleased to report that we now have settlements on all of our agreements, so we have some real numbers to start to work with. Skipped over the equipment line, because that's a relatively small line. Jumped to our contractual materials and supplies. You'll notice the significant increase in the 22. We've estimated an increase for 23, and a conservative increase on 24. Debt service is based on our actual debt service plan, so these numbers are relatively fixed. Employee benefits, these are strictly forecasted. We don't know where health insurance is going to go, and health insurance always is a big driver on our health insurance estimates, and drives our employee benefit. And of course, this does not include budget enhancements or any budget reductions that we'll be making during the budgetary process. Long and short, when we balance our revenues and expenditures, we'll see, we see that similar to nearly all schools, we had a huge surplus in the 21 as a result of COVID. And then in 22, we had deficit. If you recall, we had settlements, then we had our COVID bonuses, and those bonuses were approximately $700,000. Those are one-time, did not incorporate them into multiple years. And then it gets built into the salary schedules. And then you can see the forecasts and estimates in 23 and 24, based on the assumptions that we've got. In terms of just a general line. With regards to our fund balance, closing it out this year, this is how we sit. Our appropriated fund balance is nearly $4 million. Our TRS reserve, our ERS reserve, our employee benefit accrued liability reserve, our carryover encumbrances, our undersigned fund balance, and then of course, we do have a capital reserve, we have not funded it. Comparing it from the year before, you'll see as, obviously, what happens when you run a deficit, carve a little way from the, your fund balance. Takeaway points for this evening, our financial position. Certainly aware, the inflationary pressures still remain challenging. I think in planning our 23, 24 budget, similar path to last year, and that is maintaining programs, and possibly reallocating existing resources. Any expansion should be coming through the COVID grants, and then also being very mindful of the potential fiscal cliff when the COVID funds run out. With regards to labor negotiations and our current status, I'm pleased to report, as I mentioned earlier, that our, we've made great progress in our negotiations, PAT is settled, CSCE supervisors, district office, all are now settled, PAC is settled, we have hired an assistant superintendent, and the school business administrator selection process is underway. That makes me happy. The employee benefit costs will continue to stress different resources, particularly if the health insurance increase is significant this year. COVID and flu significantly impacts employee absenteeism. And you're all wondering, now, how is Randy going to incorporate some romance into this presentation? Because it sounds like he's near the end. And there it is. So our next scheduled board workshop with regards to budget is on our regular scheduled board meeting, and that, of course, as I planned, was on February 14th, which is, of course, Valentine's Day. So with that. Questions or concerns?
Oh, thank you. Randy's building up the net. Okay, moving on to incentive agenda 15. Motion for 15A through H. Motion, Mrs. Morgan, second.
Second.
Second, Chief Peters, any questions in session on that front? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Incentive agenda, new purpose on 16, it's A through K, no, A through L, Arizona Adenda. Motion? Motion, Mrs. Morgan?
Second.
Second, Chief Hamilton, any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you very much, OK, for the anonymous donation to the primary school, that's amazing. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seventeen, A through K. And on H, it shouldn't be 1.01, it's only a .01 on one class. Okay, I think that's, that's it. So A through K, motion?
Move.
Motion, Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Morgan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And number two. Eighteen. Eighteen, it's on A, eighteen A, it's a motion? Move. Motion, Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Nineteen. We'll do these each one. We have to find out how many people could go to the February 2nd meeting that Dr. Davy just mentioned. I'm available, anybody else? Mr. Webanero? Okay, so, motion to confirm that Mr. Webanero and I will be going to the February 2nd meeting?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Hamilton, second? Second, 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 Mrs. Morgan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And is there anyone who could go to the legislative meeting on February 3rd? I'm not available at all. Anyone? No? Okay, so we'll have, confirm that we won't have anybody, or Mr. Storms, going to that legislative meeting.
I will check with Mrs. Mitchell on both of those.
Oh, that's true, on both of those, okay. So motion to, right, at this point, not have anybody except possibly Mrs. Mitchell. Motion?
Move.
Motion, Mrs. Graves, second?
Second.
Chief Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and C, we have a memorandum of agreement with Community College, I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Webanero, second, Mrs. Morgan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carried. And D, establish a girls flag football. Girl power. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Mrs. Morgan, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Nobody opposed? I always listen to all the voices so that I don't have to ask many questions. There was nobody for public comment? Okay. Mr. Peters?
Motion.
Motion to a term, Mr. Peters, second?
Second.
Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.